Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us tonight. This is the Union Township Board of Trustees, regular meeting agenda for November 15th, 6:00 PM. Mr. Campbell, let the record show that all three trustees are present. Gentlemen, we're being asked to approve the minutes. Item one's October 11th, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Approval, item two, October 11th, 2022 zoning meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number three, October 21st, 2022, special meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve, gentlemen?
So moved.
Second.
No discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving forward, correspondence. Do we have any correspondence this evening, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, sir. I have two. They're both liquor permits. The first one is a new permit. It's for City Barbecue LLC, doing business at City Barbecue, 878 East Gate North Drive and Patio, Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45245. Mr. Floudy has assured me that it is in compliance with the zoning, and we have no objections from the police department. Second one is a new permit. It's actually a transfer. It's going from Don Manning Stores LLC, doing business as BP Unimarc 217, 543 Ohio Pike, Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45255. That's transferring to Nency, N-E-N-C-Y, LLC, 543 Ohio Pike, Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45255. Again, Mr. Floudy has assured me that it is in compliance with the zoning, and the police department has no objections.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
So, moving forward with proclamations and special presentations. So we do have tonight to distinguish Ms. Shannon Cox with our Union Township Communications Department. She's celebrating 10 years of service, November 19th, 2022. And with that, Ms. Cox, yeah, come on up. That's what we were just talking a second. So, hey, thank you so much for your dedication and being here 10 years. And, I mean, my gosh, you've seen us pop in there quite a few times. So you guys have just run a tip-top office in there with the communications. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And, yeah, anything you want to share?
Ms. Shannon, thank you very much. And I don't know how you girls do it. I really don't. I took my kiddos in there a few times. I've been there a few times in the call center to hear the radio going, to be watching your screen, to have the telephones ringing, and to know where the police officers are at, the dispatch to the nearest one that happens to be available. I mean, you're talking multitasking on steroids. And so, thank you. Just know that it's, appreciate you being here, doing a good job.
You're welcome.
And we love you and appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Absolutely.
Hi. I just want to say thank you for your 10 years of service in your township. I'm curious, after 10 years, any stories to tell? Anything come to mind?
Which one?
Anything brief?
You know, just the phone range, you just never know. It could be a baby, it could be someone passed away, just kind of like the lotto.
Because you've got to be thick-skinned for that job, too.
You're right. Home's home, work's work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can you go and grab a picture with her real quick? A, um, award. I'm not sure where it got delivered. I will get it.
Actually, ma'am, I have it. Ms. Heather gave it to me.
That's what we were looking for up there.
Sorry. Yeah, I do have it. Thank you. It's a beautiful plaque.
Oh, good, 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 good.
I have the award. I know. My husband's like, are you going to bring it with you? I have it. I'll be something like that. I'm sorry. I'll be there later.
Sorry. I'm here for all of you.
Chairman has to do it all.
You start at the top, baby.
All right, moving forward, we have a very special presentation as well tonight for new uniforms by Chief Scott Gaviglia and for our Union Township Police. I knew something was looking, you know, different over there, so, Chief?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Loeb, Mr. Dills, Mr. Becker, Alex, please. This is Officer Alex Cozo. I believe it's important, specifically to taxpayers and also as transparency to efficiency and effectiveness. These are the new uniforms that we've been talking about for some time. The supply chain's been a little slow when you try to outfit 60 people of all different shapes and sizes. It's hard to get it all in. But I believe we'll be ready to go here in just about a week or so. We're just down to one officer short. But as you can tell, from the white to the blue, right, it's more of a calming, more of a traditional look. Depending on your point of view, the white shirts were both helpful or harmful, and I believe it's a very neutral color. Also, as someone who wore a white shirt for a number of years, you spill the littlest drop of coffee on it, you're stuck with it all day. And it does affect that professional appearance. Alex is part of our honor guard. He was nice enough to model for us tonight. You can see how it's all one shade. It's a dark navy blue. And the great thing about this kind of color is it's always going to be here. So also trying to look down, down the line at cost and things like that, replacement costs will be much cheaper as opposed to trying to buy white shirts all the time. And this will be the look here going forward. You also noticed a slight change on the name tag, where we used to have the Kalia pin above the name tag. Again, speaking, I've lost countless Kalia pins to a seatbelt when I wore the white shirt. So we've just simply attached the Kalia pin. We'll replace that with an American flag, or if the officer had served in the armed services, we'll allow them to wear an armed services insignia. But more on that to come. And Alex, thank you. So I appreciate your time. And I have one more. If you gentlemen will indulge me just one more minute. Danielle?
Yeah.
If you, if you remember, Coring Township Police Officer Dale Woods was hit and killed. Hold on one second, Alex. I'll give you the word. Officer Dale Woods was hit and killed while investigating a traffic crash. Officer Woods, at the time, was wearing a reflective vest, much like you see us wear all the time. You've also noticed over the years, our police lights have went from the, you know, the ones that just kind of spun around, to the LEDs. Well, the new higher LEDs, one of the unintended consequences is, the LEDs eat the reflective of the traffic vest. There've been a number of officers that have been hit and killed. The person that hit Officer Dale Woods was stone cold sober. We had a call the other night from a woman down 32. We had two officers investigating a traffic crash, both are wearing their vest. And the woman called in and said, hey, I can't, I can't see the officers. I was at a police chief's meeting, and there was an officer from Wyoming who's made these, they're selling all over the country now. And you can see it's reflective. But what we're trying to do is defeat and help the LED at the same breath, right? The LED helps our visibility, but I want to help the officers. So I'm going to turn the lights off. Nobody panic. Alex? And so this is what it's going to look like from here on out.
Woo!
So the officer will illuminate green, which is directly reflects the red and the blue, or the blue and the red, depending on how you look at it. And this will help keep our officer safe. Danielle, if you could just move a little bit, because what we're trying to do is make it really easy for everybody to see the officer. And it's hard to, you know, simulate, you know, the darkness we encounter on State Route 32 in the middle of the night. But I believe this is a, this is a win for everybody. If you gentlemen remember, you promoted Officer Smith not too long ago. This was her first task. She got the price down to a great level for us with some quick negotiation. Thank you, Alex. And you'll be seeing these. Hopefully, they're not too terribly distant future, but I, I think it's important to share the technology. I think it's important to share how, you know, the police department's spending your money. So, gentlemen, thank you for indulging. Thank you, Danielle.
Great work on the models.
Alex, you have to recharge the battery on that.
Danielle, how long's the battery?
So, on full go, so you can actually dim these. They can dim down to a lower level. On full go, it's anywhere from like six to eight hours on full blast. It's very bright, very blinding. So what officers would like to do is dim them down. When they're dimmed down about 50%, they're saying about 12 hours. They charge in less than an hour and a half. They come with a wall charger and a cigarette lighter charger, so you can charge it in your cruisers.
Is the battery built into the fabric, or is it a separate unit?
So, it's like a battery pack inside there. You have an on and off switch, and then you just charge it through that battery pack. Those are replaceable.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Chief. Gentlemen, any comments on that presentation? I'm very excited that this is finally coming full circle, sir. And tell me if I'm wrong, but I mean, the overall feedback from the police officers, I assume that they're good with navy blue and they're, they like it.
They are. There's, you know, there's some always excitement with something new. This has been a change. It's been in the works for a while. As you recognize, change is hard, specifically in institutions that have been around for a while. But it's being embraced by everyone, and I think it's going to be a really good look. Thank you, sir.
Excellent. Excellent. Yeah, I mean, I think it's great. Alex, if you wouldn't mind, just walk on the runway for, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. The, you know, the, the way, and, and, you know, Mr. Loeb, you can attest as well, I just couldn't imagine getting deployed in the Air Force or Marine and, and wearing a white service uniform and getting deployed and having to go to combat. I just couldn't imagine it. Rolling around with a bad guy, you bump up against cars, spill coffee, whatever it is. I just think the dark navy blue makes sense. And, yeah, so hopefully, it's met with good, positive feedback. That was the whole intention. And then the reflective vest, if our officers are tenfold safer, it's a no-brainer. Yeah, so good on you. Thank you, Ms. Danielle, for spearheading that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I've heard, just, I guess, great positive comments from many of the officers I've spoke with about, about that. And to one extent, you reference someone spilled coffee, or you bump against, you know, something and it gets dirty. But even if you stay pristine, clean, apparently through dry cleaning and just the, the rubber and like your badges and stuff, everything that's on it, it just creates this yellowish-ing rub effect that just doesn't, you know.
They battleship gray in a hurry.
Yeah, yeah. So, no, so that's great. And then, yeah, the reflective vest, that's, that's, that's great. So thanks. Thank you both, Alex and Danielle, for modeling. And thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Mr. Becker, do you have a comment?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, great. Gentlemen, we will continue forward then with this agenda. We've got personnel actions. And that is, Ms. Ares, yeah, would you like to introduce that?
Yeah, as we get towards the end of the year, there's always some concerns about hours for part-time employees at the post office. We received an application. It's in the process before Courtney Brown recommending her be hired as a part-time clerk in Union Township Contract Postal Office. That's at a rate of $15 an hour, effective October, or beginning November the 21st. I believe Ms. Brown worked for the post office previously, left because she was having some time crunches and things with her personal life, and then now has some time to come back and we'll bring her back.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Ares. So, gentlemen, Ms. Brown's not with us this evening, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So we are being asked to approve the hire of Courtney Brown as a part-time clerk in the Union Township Post Office. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
And you're hearing any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, move forward. Public comments at this time. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak? Yes, please. Please share your name and address for the record, sir. Thank you.
Melvin DeWitt, 3902 Banks Road, Union Township, Ohio. We do have a problem with the public comments. I understand that. Sometimes people have things to say that are going to take much longer than the five minutes that should be held to. However, at the last trustee meeting, there was one individual that did hold to about the five minutes. However, I did not hear you complain about the foul language that he was using. And I think that is totally inappropriate. I went back over the video, and within that approximately five-minute range, he used four words that many people would be displeased with. And I think you need to watch out for that. I did appreciate the way the board said on one of the zoning changes, that they didn't have any option, that that was the way the law was written. And apparently, that's sort of held up. And I do appreciate that you explained that you couldn't do anything else, even though the public citizens in close proximity to the zoning change situation definitely did not want it. So, that's where I stand.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Thank you. At this time, is there any one further with comments this evening? Okay. Seeing no further comments, we'll continue on with the agenda. Department reports. We've got our fire and EMS, Chief Stan Dymeling.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. For the month of October, the department made 227 fire and service calls, 587 emergency medical responses that involved 593 total patients, made 389 total transports to local hospitals, and completed 1,358 hours of training. We were involved in 33 public education details and completed 73 fire safety inspections. And we also had five joint inspections with the Clermont County Permit Central, Clermont County Building Department. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Gentlemen, any questions for Chief Dymeling?
Yes, sir.
All right, moving forward, Police Department, Chief Scott Gaviglia.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. For October 2022, the communications center handled approximately 5,400 calls for service and inbound calls. Records section processed over 450 adult, juvenile adult court-related documents, and there were 130 records requests for the month. Public Affairs and Crime Prevention, the PD, participated in New Richmond's Night Out, as well as Beauchamp-Fords Trunk Retreat, and the officers handed out candy on Halloween. Patrol Division, officers took 317 incident reports, investigated 128 crashes, initiated 502 traffic stops, issued 165 citations and 374 warnings, took 585 field interviews, made 108 criminal arrests, 71 traffic arrests, and served 96 warrants. The K-9 team for the month recovered 55 grams of marijuana, two and a half grams of heroin, 12 grams of methamphetamine, which is a pretty good amount, and seven prescription narcotics. Investigation to date has closed 253 cases. There are 135 hours of training for the police department in October. Fuel was about 11,500 with 34,000 miles driven. That concludes my report, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chief. Gentlemen, any questions here?
Sir, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward, Service Department, Mr. Matthew Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. In the Cemetery Division, from October 1st through the 31st, 23 burials were performed, generating $13,425. Six resident graves were sold, generating $2,900. Three non-resident graves were sold, generating $4,500. And five columbarium niches were sold for $5,750. And three cremation scattering gardens were purchased for $1,500. The total amount generated for the period was $31,989.80. And the Roads Division, a total of 13 work orders were completed on 11 township roads. And the fall junk days were held on October 20th through the 22nd. A total of eight packer trucks, 14 30-yard dumpsters, and 35 refrigerators were collected. And in Parks Division, the cabbage and kale out front was planted at the civic center for the winter, and staff is currently mulching leaves on all township properties. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Gentlemen, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thank you.
Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple things. So first off, I just wanted to comment on the fall junk days. I love it. I think it's very popular with the people. I personally take advantage of the opportunity to clean out junk around my house. And I just hear a lot of good things about that. So I appreciate you spearheading that and doing a good job with it. The other question I had, as you know, winter's come early this year. How are we set for salt supplies and everything we need to keep the public safe through the winter?
Right now, the salt shed at Klepper is full. So we're, we're going to have a loader delivered December 1st, unless we need it sooner. Hopefully, not sooner. But, you know, it's available if need be. So, and then we have 2,000 tons available for delivery as, as we need it.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Moving forward, planning and zoning, Mr. Mark McCormick.
For October, we had 72 inspections for code enforcement, 10 complaints, three unfounded complaints, five warning citations, two 15-day non-compliance letters. We had 12 resolved cases, 163 legal signs removed, five miscellaneous issues, nine monthly violations, and five re-inspections of violations. For permits, we had two commercial permits, six changes of use, four signs, one temporary sign, 16 single-family dwellings, which is tied for the most in a month this year, one addition, two decks, two accessory uses, 12 pools, fence permits for 46 permits for the month, with the revenue being $9,285. As of last month, we were already ahead of last year's total. At the very bottom, I added some additional comments, just some recent activities. So TQL has applied for the zoning permit for the expansion of its headquarters, which staff's already reviewed. So I believe that the ball's back in TQL's consultant's hands to finish the work for the zoning permit. The Big B Coffee PD that's in place at northeast, Northgate Drive and Glen Est, Withersville Road, has received a minor amendment. They flipped the building and as a result, had to move some other things on the site. But that is still the site that they're moving forward with at this point. Put together the 2023 meeting schedule, which was attached here for, in your packets. The zoning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, what we've done is we put the dates for the meetings and the deadlines, and I've sent those both to the zoning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. And we had to move some, some of the meeting dates because of holidays, particularly around Thanksgiving and Christmas. And so far, the board members I've talked to have been good with these proposed changes. For the Board of Trustees, what we would like to do is still send all the zoning cases through the second Tuesday of the month. And I did note that on February, that particular Tuesday falls on Valentine's Day, so that's why I've highlighted it, in case you want to move that meeting or keep it. I know that's one of those holidays that sometimes people take it or leave it. And about two-thirds of the time, people want to move it. So I highlighted it so that you could tell me what you'd like to do with that.
At the moment, that schedule is preliminary and is subject to change, but just getting it out there so that people start to see the dates.
Yeah, we want to get these out pretty much by the end of the year, early next year, so that for the whole year, people know that the schedule is for the boards. And all, right now, all three or four of these schedules are on different sheets of paper. This gets everybody on one sheet of paper. And it also indicates on here that there's a deadline to apply. Right now, people can walk into the door today, keep people in the office there well past 5:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock. If they come in at 4:00, if they can stay till 5:00 at the counter, that's perfectly fine. But we just want a hard deadline. So, other than that, I've also been building a list for projects, tasks, areas of opportunity improvement. Had our first staff meeting, which I was told that was probably the first staff meeting they've ever had. And was planning on trying to have a similar dialogue with the zoning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, and I've already started to meet some of the members and tried to do that. So, and would be happy to meet with the trustees and go over some of these things as well. And I've talked to Trustee Becker a little bit about some of the things I've got on a list, on the list that I'm building. So we have lots of opportunities to do things.
Yeah. Mr. McCormick, hey, thank you very much. So this is, this was the first time you put this, right, you created this document to put all the schedules on one sheet of paper?
Yes.
I really like that. I think that that's great, because I know what you're saying. It's one document here, one document here, one document here. That helps, I think, professionalize the operations. And it helps, like you said, it gets it out there for the public, gives it out there for people that are trying to apply, developers, you name it, and they can plan, plan better. And... And I like, I like your thought process of where you're going with meeting with the staff, meeting with Zoning Commission, meeting with Zoning Appeals, helping, I'm sure with that, facilitation of education or resources also for Zoning Commission, Zoning Appeals. And I appreciate the reach out to the board as well because that's kind of, that's one area that I would say that there's, you know, even in my, even in my time here now, you know, two and a half, three years, there's never been a formal or informal interaction coalesced or coordinated by the township to bring myself and Zoning Commission and Zoning Appeals members together. So I think that's, that's great for collaboration and be able to put more faces with names and be able to have a, you know, a direct and sometimes indirect reason to get together and build those, you know, relationships with those that we so closely work with. So appreciate that. It's great. Appreciate it. Yeah, please.
I personally have a problem with Valentine's Day. So if you gentlemen are good, I'm good.
Are you asking, are you asking myself or Mr. Becker to be your Valentine?
Yeah, exactly. I do know, so Ms. Ayers, I was just looking it up while Mr. Cork was talking. There's two dates on here that, well, the May 9th date, I'm going to be out of the country for the Air Force. The August date, I'm pretty sure, but I'll be out of the country as well for the Air Force. But I should be back. Thoughts?
So in January, we will set all of the meeting dates in a reorganizational meeting. I will, actually, I was going to mention during my comments, if you have those dates where you're, you know you're wholly unavailable, you can just send me an email and say, hey, these dates, these dates.
Fair enough.
And we'll try and get them coordinated so that everybody can be in the right location. As long as we set them early, we can set them on a different date if we need to.
We talked about this, and this won't be an issue because there means being the evening. So I'll, I'll be in Germany both those times for Ramstein. But I can, are we able to vote proxy? Am I able to vote via Zoom? Is that, that is not, is that, is that, is that a town, is that a Union Township? Or is that an Ohio law?
No, actually, that's an Ohio law.
Okay.
When the COVID was going on, they amended those rules to allow you to vote via video link. But that's since expired.
Fair enough. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cork, for putting that on.
Thank you.
Mr. Becker?
I'm good.
Okay. Hey, thank you very much. All right, continue moving forward. Ms. Ayers, Township Administrator for Administration Report.
Thank you, gentlemen. I am sorry, the weather today, so I need to make my comments brief. And if everyone can hear me. The two things I really wanted to bring up, Parks and Recreation Committee has been meeting. They will meet again December 14th at 6:00 PM here in the Civic Center. They are working on prioritizing some improvements, lists that they want to be made for later presentation to the trustees. We are also working to finalize contracts with an engineering company to help us with master plans for each of the parks so that we have a plan moving forward of how we want to develop and look at the park properties. So I appreciate that committee and all their hard work, and we hope to keep moving that forward. Had two RFPs that were pending in the last month, got great responses to both of them. First, we have the Township Web Redesign and Information System Services. We received four responses to the RFP. It was a mix of national firms and local. I put together a group from Administration, Information Technology, Police to review the responses, and we will work on getting a shortlist to move forward and then present to the board. I hope to have that in the December meeting. We also have the RFP for the Master Planning Feasibility Analysis for East Gate Mall. We received 12 responses for that. It was also a mix of national and local firms. Similarly, I have a group from Administration, Planning, Zoning, and the CIC to work on reviewing those responses and shortlists to be able to move those forward. That is probably a January or February discussion point. But was more pleased with the responses, and we look forward to bringing those projects to fruition. I am going to further rest of my comments until we talk legislation.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Gentlemen, any comments or questions?
Ayers, I just love it. I love that we're just trying to get the ball rolling on East Gate Mall. Well done. Fully support you. You're doing a good job. Thank you.
Mr. Becker?
I'm good.
Yeah, and thanks again for the update with the Parks and Rec Committee and the Park Master Plan. That's something I've been, you know, very excited about, having that first citizen-led, citizen engagement committee. And Mr. Dills, thanks again for taking the lead with that committee. So very excited about what that can bring to, to the township and amenities to the township. And then excited very much for Web Redesign. I've heard that for I don't know how many years about Web Redesign. So just grateful to be able to look at an opportunity to invest into technology as an infrastructure cost because that is really what it is. Because that's, it's going to really help us with our transparency, communication, accountability through and through to the public. So it's really great. So all right, keep moving forward. And we are on to our public hearing, zoning case 6-22-Oscar. Mr. McCormick, if you'd like to introduce that?
Yes, so this case is for SJ Rolling Oaks LTD. Owner and applicant, site location is on Rolling Oaks Drive, just south of 125. The parcel number is 413217G262. Site is .46 acres. The zoning is B1, and it's in the Ohio Pike, State Road 125 Commercial Corridor Focus Area. And the applicant is seeking to establish an approximately 5,000-square-foot dry storage facility on that property. So I'm going to go over to the staff, written staff report in conjunction with the PowerPoint. As you can see here in this slide, the location is approximately 230 feet southwest of Rolling Oaks Drive and State Road 125, behind a commercial plaza. And the property is zone B1, and you can see what's surrounded is zone B1 to the north and to the east. To the south, we have an R3 planned multifamily. And to the west, we have an R1 single-family detached structure residential area. And that is a township road. Article 13 acknowledges the focus areas, what their intents are, that there are supplemental regulations that are intended to be less restrictive than the base zoning to give the trustees authority to implement specific purposes contained within that section. And whenever there's a conflict between the regulations of the base zoning district and those of the overlay, the overlay shall supersede the base district resident regulations. Section 1310, the applications for zoning certificates in those areas shall be made pursuant to the zoning resolution and shall demonstrate the need to modify regulations for the zoning district to be eligible for the review. The property must be zoned within a, with a principal permitted use. And in this case, the use is a permitted use. And the trustees shall consider an overlay district application and as a part of that, make findings of fact and adopt a motion approving or denying the application, which is noted under the action required portion of the staff report. And if needed, further data can be required. This is the site with the topography. Site's pretty level. As you'll see in the pictures from the site that I took a few weeks ago. This is a picture of the survey of the property. And this is the plan that we received this morning, which was updated from the materials that were posted on the website and also that were sent previously. And so in the updated materials, some of the recommended modifications that were in the original report dated November 4th, were taken care of, and I'll highlight those here in a minute, come back to these. This is the proposed appearance of the building. There's metal on the top portion of the building and stone on the lower portion. So before I get into the pictures here, as far as the comprehensive plan, the corridor does contain along 125, Ohio Pike, a variety of the commercial multifamily institutional and public uses and facilities. There've been a lot of changes in this area. But the placement of the overlay has been evident. 125 is a principal arterial four-lane road with left turn lane with a traffic volume approximately of 29,800 trips in this area. Significant traffic. There are significant residential populations in this area. Lack of sidewalks that results in safety issues for those seeking alternative modes of transportation. So the plan does call for sidewalks in the area, shared driveways, whatever practical, and site development to be done in a manner that focuses on maximizing land use efficiency and infill development. Also calls for the use of traditional building materials, adequate vegetative buffering, and landscaping being strategies along shared property lines and along the corridor. This property is just off the main visible part of the corridor. The building that I showed you here a minute ago was 20 foot, 26-foot-high structure. And in this plan here that we received today, you can see that basically there's two main halves, if you want to look at it that way, the darker lines. The one half, which is to the west, I believe, is the part that's intended to be occupied by the owner. The part that's to the east, southeast, could be one or two different units for rental as proposed. And essentially, after reviewing the application, it appears that the proposal is consistent with the recommendations of the adopted land use plan, as well as the purpose and intent of the overlay district. There are some additional items that we needed, and I'll get to that here at the very end. These pictures were taken here a few weeks ago. Obviously, there are more leaves on the trees. This is looking southwest from State Road 125. The site is on your right, just past that driveway that you see. This is looking from the site northeast towards 125. Site would be on your left there. This is looking south, if you're approximately in the entrance location that's shown on the drawing, towards the dead end of the street. You actually see there in the background, there on the left, they're putting in new sidewalks on the other side of the street. This is looking at the site, if you're looking from left to right, from west to northwest, how it lays. This is looking across the street, from left to right, east to southeast. This is looking north at that strip center. This is looking southwest from the strip center towards the detention area. And this is looking from the rear of the property, about where the detention area would be, towards the front of the property. So the recommended modifications that remain as of today, when I received the newer information, the applicant would need to address any immediate concerns of the county engineer, Claremont County Soil and Water, Building Department, Fire Department, and the other agency. We would need some more details regarding the proposed landscaping plan. We did get some more information. However, we also received kind of conflicting information that we'll need to clarify. We've got a statement on the current plan that says that the landscaping along the south and west would be preserved. But we also show that that's the area where they're going to be putting in utilities. And a lot of times when they put in utilities, they're going to clear all that area out. So that's something that we'll have to verify and address. The other items that remain are pretty minor in nature. Probably the most significant would be the lighting, which all, the lighting is intended to be downward facing and on the front of the building. And I think the front of the building is intended to be not the part that fronts Rolling Oaks Drive. It's the part that faces towards the strip center. If I, once we get that verified, we'll know for sure. Other than that, the other items are very minor, some scale issues addressing. Needs to be corrected. Construction schedule needs to be acknowledged. But overall, everything else is in good shape. Any questions on this? From the board?
Gentlemen? Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Good presentation. Appreciate it.
I would note, I did not receive any calls about this from the people that we notified. And we notified everybody around it.
Appreciate you doing that.
Okay. So this is a public hearing at this time. If the developer or a proponent of the application would like to speak, I'll swear in a proponent.
I'm Zachary Deck.
Yeah, come on up. For the, since this is a public hearing, part of the record, I guess, where you went. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as I hope you got.
I do.
All right, can you please state your name and address for the record, too?
Zachary Deck, 2346 Shimmering Bay Lane, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45244.
Thank you, Zach.
I don't have much to say. I really don't know what Mark explained. I would just like to build the building. I have a car or two that I would like to store there. And the way that I can finance it is to rent the other two out. So that's pretty much the gist of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Can you spell your last name for me, please?
D is in David, E-C-H.
I have a question.
Thank you.
What, you said the other half will be, you think you're going to rent that out. What do you anticipate it being used for? Renting to who, for what purpose?
Army Storage, or maybe like a small landscaping company to park their equipment in there. Nothing with a lot of traffic, just some.
So it'll just be storage regardless?
Yes.
Opposed to a business operation of some sort?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, is there any opponents? All right, seeing none. There's no additional questions. Does the board have any questions? Of the proponent? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We'll open it up for the board. Close the public hearing and open it up to the board for discussion.
Yeah, I drove, I drove by it the other day. I don't have any objections.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I've actually said this all year. Shame on me. But I, you know, I see Mr. Wings here. I appreciate our zoning committee and what they do and their due diligence. Mr. McCormick, thank you for working with them as well. Love the modifications. I think it'd be great. Mr. Day, appreciate you investing in Union Township very much. So it should be a good project. But that's it.
Okay. At this time, gentlemen, the action required is a motion to act in accordance with section. Let's see, and there's. Let me, let me just ask this real fast, where you move forward on that. The recommended modifications, so the applicant is aware of all the recommended modifications?
Yes.
Items 1, 2, 3, 4?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I see. All right, so with that, we're being asked in accordance with section 1310 of the zoning resolution, board trustees, to, this would be approved with the recommended modifications for the focus area overlay district application for case 6-22-Oscar. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Day.
All right, gentlemen, continue to move forward. Old business, is there, we have no old business on the agenda? Is there any old business that did not make it to the agenda? All right, seeing none, keep moving. New business. Approval of payments, item Alpha. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
No discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item Bravo, approval of monthly financial report. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing the discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Approval of purchase orders. Do we have that motion, item Charlie? And we'll let Susan introduce the purchase orders.
Two matters worth consideration, please. First is $100,000 to Claremont County Treatment Improvement District. This was the payment issue that we discussed at the last meeting. The board passed a resolution. This is authorizing the payment. First, we went to that resolution for work done.
Okay.
The second is for $13,500 to office furniture stores for furniture for the East Gate Professional Office Building Suite that we are updating.
Okay. Thank you. Gentlemen, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item Delta, now, Ms. Ayers, would you like to introduce this one?
Yes, my manager. We have been involved the past couple of months with union negotiations with Union Township Police Association. Like to present tonight some modifications in their collective bargaining agreement for your approval and ratification. This involves three units within our police department. One is the patrol officers, one is supervisors, and one of this is the Communication Center employees. All items, all units had a collective bargaining agreement lasting until October 31st. We've been engaged in negotiations with them. All unions have voted and tentatively approved these agreements pending your action this evening. I want to highlight some of the changes. So after a good discussion, negotiation session, we came through with about 11 changes that we want for the language. The first, a lot of these, I will tell you, are some minor language changes. As I look at a contract with new eyes, there is some reference to outdated technology. There's some small dates that really are just functional. They're not changing necessarily the terms of the They're not changing necessarily the terms of the agreement, but just update some of the terms that we use in the contracts that is easier for interpretation. The first has to deal with fair share fees. There was a Supreme Court decision a few years ago indicating that we could not collect fair share fees from union. So we'd be amending the language to say fair share fees can only be collected when legally authorized to do so. Amending some days to add two additional days to respond to grievances is step one and two, being an administrative change. Adding language to the discipline section about discussing tape recorded meetings during disciplinary proceedings. We had an old reference to tape recorded technology. During the hours of work at overtime, we're agreeing to 180-hour cap for accrued compensatory time. Amending the list of holidays to include the federal holiday duty. Amending sick leave to add foster grandparents to the list of persons for which an employee may utilize sick leave. Adding additional language that employees with a proper number of bank may request payout for four hours of sick leave, the rate of one hour of pay for items in their sick leave bank. Increasing some maximum payment payouts for sick leave bank. Amending the language for days off for bereavement leave. Allowing, and uniforms and equipment, allowing retiring employees to purchase their service weapon for an amount of a dollar upon retirement. For wages, over the period of a three-year contract, we are proposing in year one of the contract, there's 4% cost of living or across the board wage increases. 3.5% in year two of the contract, 3% in year three. This always gets a lot of attention, I think, given where we are in the economy and where the comparatives come out for different contracts. This puts us pretty similar to where we would need to be in the marketplace to maintain our status and be able to recruit and continue to develop the top-class employees that we have. We are adding one term longevity pay for employees that are here for a long time. The idea to continue incentivize our employees to stay here and make their career here. Be adding longevity pay for employees with years eight to 15 years of experience, a one-time payment of 1% of their salary. For employees with 15 years or more, a one-time payment of 1.5% of their salary. Again, when they stop getting standard step increases like they do in their contract, this gives them some incentive to continue working and make Union Township their home. We're also adding a 2% additional assignment pay for detectives. We maintain four or five detectives out of five. And they are frequently subject to call-out of weird hours. It makes it difficult for family life. So this provides some incentive for that and recognition of their sacrifices they make for that assignment. We made some amendments to tuition assistance that the set amount of $3,000 may be amended at the discretion of the chief of police and the township administrator. The idea being that if we are in a budget year where we can afford additional tuition assistance, that is a good incentive for our employees. Also, an agreement allowing the township to potentially reimburse new officers for the cost of tuition of the Basic Ohio Police Officer Training Academy. So in order to help us with recruiting new officers and the top candidates, this proposal would allow us to, when we bring an employee on, agree that we could reimburse them for the cost of their tuition to get that certification. It would be paid every, a portion of it would be paid in six-month increments as they go along with the idea that would incentivize them to come to the township and then stay here for that extra benefit. And then finally, for duration, we're asking for a three-year agreement. And again, not mentioned, the means we are maintaining current contract language. And all three units have tentatively ratified this agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Do you have any questions on it?
Yeah, just a couple of things. You did a very good job, Ms. Ayers. Appreciate you. I think this is, and the police union president and officers, they're, we're good on this. It's a good compromise and happy.
I think we're saying good feedback.
Love it, and hopefully, if any of our officers watch it, I mean, I feel like you try to have their best interest, our township's best interest, both. It's compromise, I get it. But love the idea of keeping our officers here, long-term, retirement. You know, start here at age 21, 25, and stay here till retirement. I love it, incentivizes them. Tuition assistance and the reimbursement of the police academy fee, I love it, I love it. And you got, we got to think outside the box to recruit new, new, new police officers, so I'm good with it. And it makes sense every six months to do the reimbursement, so, you know, we don't reimburse them after day one, and then they up and leave to Westchester or Miami Township or something, or the sheriff's office. But well done. I just, yeah, thank you very much. I know it's a lot of work, so.
Mr. Becker?
Oh, yeah, really just a housekeeping question. You said the three police unions have tentatively agreed to it.
Yes.
So does that mean if we approve it tonight, then it goes back to them for final agreement?
No, if you, both sides have to assent to it. So if you were to vote yes this evening, the contract would be ratified and get final contract language and circulated for signatures. If you decide you do not want to ratify it this evening, we would go back to the bargaining table.
I see. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ayers. Yeah, absolutely, I think, great, great work on this and finding the areas to make the updates that were needed and bringing, bringing everything forward. And yeah, just great, great work, so. Gentlemen, at this time, then, we're seeking a motion for approval of item Charlie, I'm sorry, item Delta, the collective bargaining agreement and ratification of their contract.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no further discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Moving forward, item Echo, our leasing contract authorization with Congressman Winstrip's office. Ms. Ayers, if you would please introduce.
Thank you, your honor. As you know, we have had in the lower level of this building, the University of Cincinnati Air Care, over the summer, they have indicated that they were not able to financially maintain a second location and have vacated that space pursuant to their contract. I was approached from Congressman Winstrip's office about potentially, as they redistricted, needed to move their main offices and were interested in coming back to the Union Township Civic Center. I believe and correctly thrown that they were in this space previously and then moved to Anderson Township and are now asking to come back. What you'll see on the screen is a proposed area for their offices. We are asking you to approve two agreements this evening because of the way the federal government contracting works. It would be a one-month agreement from December, effectively for the month of December this year, and then a second agreement starting January. As the new Congress gets into session, they can approve a second contract. I am pleased to see them back here. I've enjoyed working with their people. I think it'll be a great one-stop shop for our residents to be able to address their concerns locally as well as on a national level. And it'd be great for us to get that space utilized. We have had a few things in the offices here that were able to relocate, so there's no major interruptions to township operations.
That's great. Any questions, gentlemen?
No, I think it's great. I mean, love Congressman Winstrip, glad he could be here with the largest township in Claremont County, largest township in his source population and his entire district. And I'm glad he's going to call us home, so, yeah, good job, good job making that happen.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I feel the same way. I think it's a feather in our cap to have a congressman here. He's got all, you know, great people on staff, and I'll look forward to seeing him on a regular basis.
Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah, and Susan noticed that the description of the diagram here, too, putting through the essentially wall and doorway down there, too, which I think is beneficial because it kind of segregates his office from what is his office. So that's an enhancement to what I think layout may, may have been in the past. So it's, you know, I was kind of visualizing that. So a resident, when they come in here, too, they're going to be able to very clearly go downstairs to the glass doors there and see Congressman Winstrip's, very well represented as far as where their office is and what their office environment is because of this, this, you know, small wall that's going in, but it's, I see this on the diagram, I think that, that's great, so. No, great work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, this time, then, we'll seek that motion for approval, item Echo.
Just for the first part, though, correct?
For the leasing contract authorization.
Just 2022.
Just for, yeah, and then we'll have a second action. Now, are you asking for authorization on both?
This is one authorization for two contracts. The first being for the period of December 2022, the second being commencing January 2023 and lasting 24 months. You can actually do it in one action, approve both contracts.
There you go.
Sorry, bud.
That's okay.
Let's do that.
Yeah, so seek that motion for approval, item Echo, as written.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So now we're all lined up, and now it's just basically waiting on the congressional office and staff and the budgetary authority that they carry from, like she was saying, through the end of this term. And then that's January 1, they're able to start that new term. And that's all on them.
Their legal team has already looked at this draft, so I believe we are ready to go now that you have approved the agreements. I will work with his folks to get those signed, but I anticipate that we are good to go from what I've heard.
Okay. All right, moving forward, Ms. Ayers, if you'd like to introduce item Foxtrot, meeting rules for board of trustees.
Thank you, sir. You're going to be sick of hearing me at some point. Also have some slides up on the screen. One of the things we've discussed since I got here is the idea of how do we make our business work most efficiently for the getting accomplished business necessary. I believe you had started this process with Mr. Wright earlier in the year. I took it up and did a few additions and amendments. The idea behind this is that it would provide us with some guiding principles of how we want to handle business ourselves. On the screen now is what the table of contents would be, so it gives you an overview of what's discussed in the meeting rules. The idea is it sets out how we do business, what we want to accomplish, and how we're going to conduct ourselves during meetings. Originally, we started working with Mr. Wright. I believe the draft was posted on our website for public review and comment on February the 9th of this year. We did receive a couple of comments that were integrated into this draft now. With your approval, I think we should post this again and discuss it during our December meeting after we've had this discussion and give the public a chance to weigh in if they would like to do so. I'm going to go through a few sections briefly, just to give an overview. The first being the purpose. The purpose of the rules and procedure is to guide the board of trustees of Union Township, Claremont County, Ohio, staff and members of the public, and prepare for and conducting sessions of the board. The board meeting section sets out the duties of the chairperson, largely rule on any motions, control the debate amongst members, adherents to the agenda, ensure the rules are being followed, so keeping us on agenda, moving forward, and making sure that everyone is conducting themselves in accordance with the rules. Board meeting section also sets out the established order of business, so the idea is we have a flow to our agenda that we would like to see continue. So it sets out what we, the preferences for that agenda. Also establishes the rules of order, how we want to handle business when an item is before the board for action. It adopts a, I'll say slightly amended Roberts Rules of Order, which is allowed and very typical. So it sets out the rules by which we will handle business. There's a section next on, in board meetings, on public conduct. So the idea is that we welcome and certainly want everyone to feel comfortable here, coming to meetings and listening. But in order to do that, we all need to maintain certain standards for personal conduct. So the idea is that members are welcome and able to be here, need to remain seated unless recognized to speak. No person can shout, yell, call out, or otherwise behave disruptively at a meeting. No threatening, menacing, or obscene language. So, Mr. Day, I hope that addresses your concern as well as we start to address some of these matters. There's also a section, again, on public participation. We encourage the public to be able to come here, address their specific concern, bring matters to the board or staff, and speak in favor or in opposition to matters being considered by the board. Sets out that each regularly scheduled meeting will have a public comment section. No public comment will be required at special trustee meetings because the agenda limits what we can talk about at those meetings, but it may be considered as appropriate and necessary. Public comment is a time for the board and staff to receive information. It's not a time for debate or argument. Township applies the rules and procedure to all speakers, does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, the content of what the speaker says, or the viewpoint the speaker takes. We're here to listen to everyone that we represent and will do so for every person that comes as long as they're speaking pursuant to the rules. Also, for public participation, this sets out that each speaker will fill out a card when they enter the meeting hall, having their name, address, contact information, their nexus to Union Township and the topic they'd like to discuss. Those cards will be returned to the staff prior to the meeting getting started and will be used by the chairman to determine the order of people speaking in the meeting. So the idea is instead of saying, hey, does anyone want to speak? We would have a list developed already. It also helps us administratively for a staff. If someone brings something up that we need to later address, I already have the card with their address and contact information, so I'm able to more easily contact them later and follow up on issues. Sets up a rule that speaker may speak for a total of five minutes, may not yield time to others. Any document the speaker would like to provide during public comment must be submitted to the fiscal office for a distribution after the meeting, can be incorporated by reference. Comments must be directed to the board, not individuals in the audience. And again, no participant may use obscene or threatening language. The next section is amendment of rules. The idea is that this is a living document. Each board can review, make changes as they desire. We can decide that something works for us, doesn't work for us, and we want to update it as things go along. Rules can be amended or repealed by a majority board of the board and effective at the regular, next regular meeting after approval. Rules can be temporarily suspended by motion and majority board of the board at any time. So if we have an issue that we believe we have some time to discuss and would like more time to discuss, we can amend those rules on an as-needed basis if we choose to do so. Another idea set out in this that I'd like to bring to the board's attention is the idea of regular business meetings versus working sessions. I know currently we are just using our regular business meetings for every topic that we need to discuss. Sometimes that can draw meetings out of it. And there are certain topics that I think maybe some education and discussion ahead of time would be helpful. So I'd like the board to consider, and I've set up as options in these rules, moving to a system by which we have one regular business meeting a month and one working session. Working sessions would be a little less formal. I would only ask staff to be here if they have a topic that's being discussed on the agenda. And it would give us a time to discuss issues in a preview-type way so that you have a chance to hear them, ask any questions before you're being forced to vote on a matter. If the public was to bring something to your attention, they would have a chance to do that at either meeting, but the working session would be a little bit more free-form discussion. And I think that would help us move business a little bit more effectively and be able to preview issues and further discussion amongst the board, but also with members of the public. If that's something that you want to consider, I would suggest we work on that for our January reorganizational meeting, and then we have a clean start in January for the two meetings a month, one work session, one business session. I know there was some concern that the trustees raised, other people have raised, about limiting the amount of public speaking. I did a survey of other jurisdictions because I think this stuff's interesting. So I brought up a couple of the local jurisdictions. Sycamore Township, four minutes per speaker. Anderson Township, three minutes per speaker. Westchester Township actually has two sections of public comment. In the first session, at the beginning of their meeting, they have comments of two minutes per person with no more than five speakers. Second session, at the end of the meeting, speakers are limited to a reasonable time, whatever that is interpreted to be. Claremont County has five minutes per person with a total of 30 minutes for comment time. Colrain Township has five minutes per speaker. Franklin Township has three minutes per speaker. I was not able to find everybody's list automatically, but these are a few of the samplings that I've seen from around this area. I will tell you from my past work, it is very, it was pretty common to have some limited somewhere between three and five minutes for, per person to speak so that we can move through agenda items as quickly and efficiently as possible. If a person needs to speak for longer than that, the board can choose to amend the rules on a particular subject, but also would have the ability to submit additional comments in writing that can be distributed to the board so that they can have that matter heard, which would also be a benefit as we go towards work sessions because a person that wants to come and talk on a topic during the introduction can talk for their five minutes and then submit additional comments in writing if they would like to do so. That is a very quick overview. Happy to take any questions that you have. With the board's approval, my thought would be perhaps that we think on this, have some discussion. I'll post it back on our website, and then we'll bring it back in December for a vote, which would make it effective in January.
Gentlemen, do you have any comments at this time for Ms. Ayers?
Reading this correctly, Ms. Ayers. By the way, thank you for putting all this together. I know this is a lot, a lot of work. Is it, is it the board's approval or is it the chairman's discretion on going above five minutes of public?
The chairman has the immediate discretion, but the board can take a vote to effectively overrule the chairman if they'd like to do so. So the idea of checks and balances is that the chairman keeps control of the meeting, but then ultimately, if there's, there could be a group vote if we had that occur.
Curious your guys' thoughts on all this. So, yeah, I'll share a couple of quick comments. Ms. Ayers, you're right, first posted this in February online, and the additions that you've added then would be different, so I think it's appropriate to hold anything out for comment until December. But honestly, the fact that it was posted in February shows you how early this board had the first discussions and conversations about it. If you guys, you know, remember hearing me at least bring it up and referencing in January about meeting, you know, rules and running a professional and effective meeting and having a working session. So I kind of like, I really like the direction this is all going. These are all the steps that have to get put in place to be able to execute that and enact that. to be able to execute that and enact that. And, you know, that kind of, again, in my mind, when you talk about working sessions, that starts to tie into the overall strategic position for the township. That also, you know, it's not in the same conversation, but that starts to open up the conversation about, you know, a annual or semi-annual strategic planning session or retreat session, where the board members are able to basically outline, look at strategic plans with the township staff, with the administrator, and add that checks and balance and that accountability to, are we accomplishing the goals that we set out to say that we, you know, were going to do, based off of what the people have asked us to go and accomplish those goals? So, you know, I really like the direction of this going. I recognize that professionalizes the process, the way that she has developed part of these roles here. Because I can think back to, and I heard a comment earlier tonight about, you know, foul language. You know, and that's, you know, I guess only I can speak from the chairman's position to both of you right now and share any kind of, you know, wisdom or guidance on that. I mean, and I'll say it in this sense, if you've ever, if you've ever just been, has air force background, right, or Navy? Air Force?
I've loved you by myself. Definitely you should not.
Yeah, so the point of the references, if you've ever just been sucker punched, right, out of the blue, you know, sometimes it's difficult to be able to say, well, I did not, you know, did not foresee that someone, I can't read someone's mind, didn't know what they were going to drop and say. And sometimes when that happens, a little two-minute or four-minute spurt, and it's one thing, and hey, they turn around and they say something to someone, that's something that's hard to obviously put that back in the bag. Now, if it's going 25 minutes and it's very repetitive of stuff, that, as a chairman position, you're able to very easily identify the pattern there that's coming, when there's hostility or there's something that's going on. And you're able to help make those course corrections and guidance on that. But I think it's very important to maintain that bearing, because we can look back, I can look back anyway to, it might just be the month of October, sir. It was last October. My dad had had a fall, and I was out of this meeting at the time, but it was a lot of back and forth and sideways and turning around to people in the audience, and it was out of order. So that's a place where this, these meeting rolls, again, I took as a significant learning lesson last October, which would be important to carry forward. And I see Mr. Campbell shaking his head yes. So he's probably the sage wisdom to speak on any of it, just from his perspective too, if you guys would like to hear his analysis. But I hope that that clarifies to both of you too, as far as what I'm saying. Sometimes there's just, I mean, in the military, it's why an ambush is an ambush, you know? I mean, it's, you're not planned for, but you're gonna have a plan for, you know, how you drive through that ambush and secure the area. So I think that's what we're trying to do here. So those are just kind of my comments on it as that goes. And as either of you gentlemen may find yourself in the chairman position, running the meetings in the future, and being able to have this form and structure that you enact on. Because the other thing that, as we currently set, we, there's not rules and procedures that are adopted. And, you know, previously it has been stated, well, we, you know, follow Roberts Rules of Order. Well, if you follow Roberts Rules of Order, if you're not a parliamentarian, I mean, you can get yourself into a whole lot of detailed concerns or issues with following Roberts Rules of Order, being a parliamentarian, was it discrimination or was it not? And, you know, so I think it's just charts of real clear, black-and-white process moving forward. So those are just kind of the comments that I just have for you guys as you review through these and consider that. And then for any of the public that's paying attention, watching, that wants to view the comments and, you know, share any comments with us. So, Mr. Dills, Mr. Becker?
Yeah, so first off, Mr. Duett, I agree with every word you said. Thank you on that. Also, Ms. Ayers, you know, when I went through all this, I was very impressed. You did a great job with it. I know we had a draft earlier. There was some language in that draft I kind of wasn't too sure about, wasn't sure what the right answers were. When I read through all this, and I did make a few notes, but nothing, not a lot of notes. So, and I really appreciate the public getting a chance to review this. And then, you know, we can take their input and what we're discussing tonight, what we'll discuss at the next meeting as well, and put together a final list. So I do want to kind of, with that, just to review some of the detail that I came up with. First of all, I guess I wanted to ask you a question. You mentioned that some of this overrode Roberts Rules, and I did recognize that, or I saw a couple of things that looked like that was the case. And I understand these rules can do that. That's not my issue. But can you give me some examples of where we are overriding Roberts Rules?
I am not familiar enough with Roberts Rules to be able to tell you exactly.
Okay.
Largely where this is, you'll see a lot of Roberts Rules, is the section on how we conduct business. So the idea of when there's a resolution or a piece of legislation in front of the body, how do you handle motions, seconds, voting, discussion?
I see.
That sets up what I'll lightly call a modified Roberts Rules of Order. Roberts Rules of Order, as Mr. Logue alluded to, is incredibly complicated and incredibly difficult to follow to the letter of the law. So the idea is by setting up these rules, we're indicating how we want to handle business. And while it's based in Roberts Rules of Order, I don't want anyone to think we're adopting Roberts Rules of Order as-is, because I think that becomes unworkable.
Yeah, that makes sense, because, you know, Roberts Rules, of course, is very, very global. And these rules are tailored, you know, narrowly to our needs here. So also, we're talking about the work session meetings, so I like the idea of going twice a month. I think the public would like that as well. I haven't heard any comments for a while from the public, but initially, there was a couple of people that mentioned about going back to two meetings a month. And I think part of it also has to do with the six o'clock timeframe and people getting here. So I guess something I'd want my colleagues to consider is for those work session meetings, beginning in January, make it a seven o'clock sort of time. So you guys can think about that. Other couple of things here, if we, this is starting to get into the weeds a little bit. So under public participation, item six, subsection B. So it talks about, you know, any resident, taxpayer, business owner within township jurisdiction may participate during the public comment session of the meeting. So my concern, I guess, is that limiting too much? You know, what about other stakeholders for the township?
Okay.
I think about like when Mr. Martin was here, you know? He doesn't have a business here. He doesn't have, he doesn't live here. Yet his comments are very relevant and germane. I don't want to be boxing out people like that.
Okay.
So I'd like to modify that section. And the last thing I have on here is also under section six, this would be subsection E. And I would like, I'd be more comfortable to add some language, giving the chairman more discretion. And I heard what you said about, he already has that discretion, but I didn't read that, at least my first go-through through the meeting or through this document. So I guess I would like to start that paragraph, starting with letter E, start with the words, unless otherwise, if I can read this here, unless otherwise directed by the chairman or a board majority. So that's how that sentence would start. So I really want the chairman to have the power to just on the fly make decisions, you know, whether somebody should go five minutes, six minutes, whatever it is. And then, of course, then the, and the board, if we wanted to vote or needed to vote, could vote either way on that. So otherwise, the way I'm reading it as-is, if we wanted to give somebody five and a half minutes, we'd have to vote on that, which I think is silly. And I don't think that was your intention. So I think adding that language would be helpful. Which then it gets into, also, what Mr. Duett was talking about, is five minutes enough? I think that has to be, you know, I think it's a whole lot of it depends. And I think there are going to be circumstances where, you know, we're gonna say, yeah, you need an extra 30 seconds, extra minute, two minutes, whatever that is, which again would need to be the call of the chairman to do that. But of course, then, those exceptions, so I guess what I'm saying is that five minutes, rather than being written in stone, being more of a, kind of a target time, we ask politely for five minutes. If somebody needs six, seven, we could do that at discretion of the chairman. So that's really my thoughts on all of this.
Prompts a couple of questions that I'll have. I'll start with that last one there. Ms. Ayers, does that present, I'd like to have, I'd like to know the legal opinion, I guess, on that as far as, yes, you can have, when I'm viewing that, the chairman or the board may have discretion. I'm thinking, maybe we have an individual that has to use an assistive device to speak to the board, and that takes, you know, more time, and we shouldn't deny them their right and their First Amendment right. But just because we like or we don't like or something of what someone's saying on a whim, being able to change, I think that that starts to open up discretionary that's discrimination. And that would be my concern, is to limit someone's. So can you, you know where I'm going with that as far as my question? Can you speak to that for me?
I agree with you that I think that does open up a set of problems. It is not necessarily fatal to the discussion. But what I would recommend is that if we have, you leave the five minutes as-is. In the event we have a topic where we, you know, we are aware there's going to be a lot of community interest, there's going to be a lot of people here, there would be a motion prior to starting public comment to extend the comment period to seven, 10 minutes for everyone on that particular topic, so that the rules are enforced equally for every single person.
Okay, I like that concept. Additionally, I will just put this out there too, as far as, again, from setting the agenda and for board members' consideration. If it's something that is as she's describing, there's multiple comments or length of comments, then I ask the question, you know, are we giving the adequate resources and attention from a township to what that concern is? Is this the appropriate forum? Is it working session? Is it third-party surveys? Is it directly working with the staff? Are we giving the adequate time and attention to address that concern? And is this the appropriate forum? That would be my question that that would go into. So, and do you have a thought on that, Ms. Ayers?
I think some of this does work out with the idea that you would have working sessions, because there is more time to provide feedback and comments. But also, this is a living document. If we try it for a little while and decide we hate it and it doesn't work, we'll fix it.
Yeah.
But the idea is that, you know, the idea we're to set out a goal and set out where we want to be, and that if we need to pivot, we will.
Yeah, I mean, and one example of the additional forums too, it's just like creating the Parks and Rec Committee. There's an avenue there for citizens to engage and provide formal feedback to the board. So I think there's many opportunities and will be continued, I think, growth of opportunities. Mr. Dills?
Mr. Becker, I feel, I know why you feel pressured about the five-minute rule. I get it. But I think there's also some individuals that take advantage of our niceness and go on for 20, 30 minutes, on and on and on. And it's, you know, we don't have all night sometimes. But so I think having the two meetings a month will help solve that. But I think, as far as, I mean, so hypothetically, when I sit in your seat, Mr. Logue, in the future, you know, five minutes, and if they need a little bit of extra time, okay, just, you know, you just try to wrap it up pretty soon. But if they take advantage of our niceness and they go on for 15, 20, 25 minutes, well, then it's time to kind of, you know, hey, you gotta wrap it up, for crying out loud. At least that's how I would run the meeting, so, in a nice way. So, but I think if literally every township, our neighbors, our county commissioners are all, you know, three to five minutes, our school board, which we have school board members at 10-year-old time, I believe they're three minutes, last time I checked at West Claremont. You know, I think that's fair. And then just if they go and cede the five minutes, okay, just try to wrap it up as soon as you can, kind of thing. Mr. Becker, I agree with you 100% because I have spoken at Anderson, I've spoken at Miami Township recently, and I don't live in either one of those townships. And I'm okay with anyone speaking up here. I don't think that that'll be an issue, my personal opinion. I don't, I'm not comfortable with that being in the rules. If someone lives right across the border in Pierce or Anderson, and they want to come and speak because they're having an issue in Union Township, well, technically, they don't fall under any of this. And so I would like to hear what they have to say. Or maybe someone lives way out on 32 but drives through 32, and like, hey, I'm having some issues in Union Township, and I want to bring to the board's concerns. Well, technically, they wouldn't fall under this category either. So I'm okay with anyone speaking, whether they live here or not, or have a business here or not, just me personally. Didn't want to ask you, gentlemen, what you thought about, I personally love Tuesdays. I like, I will take a long weekend trip every now and then, usually about Thursday, come back Sunday. So I can't stand the thought of having a meeting on Thursday, personally, but that's totally me being selfish. First, I want to ask what your thoughts are on Tuesdays. I personally like six o'clock better as well, but I'm all about compromise. I think if the meeting goes two hours, it's gonna go to eight o'clock. If the meeting starts at seven o'clock, it's gonna go to nine o'clock. And, you know, talking bedtime. And then also, I gotta think about, I got two chiefs over there, administrator, I got these folks over here, and they all need to go home to their spouses and all that too, so. So it's just my personal, but I'm good with doing six, six and seven for the working session, if you want to do both. Again, compromise, but...
That's what I was talking about, six for the working sessions, I'm sorry, seven for the working session, six for our standard meeting.
Because I guess the assumption would be the working session wouldn't be as long.
Would be a quicker meeting.
Maybe about an hour-ish, hopefully, Lord willing. So just wanted to give you my thoughts. I personally love Tuesdays compared to Thursdays, for selfish reasons. But, and then, I'm good with six, but if the overall, but hey, we're here for the folks of Union Township. If they all prefer seven, then we'll move it to seven. That's okay. I just prefer six as well, but whatever.
Do you have any comments?
I've got a couple of things to add to you on that. I'll go backwards from where you said that. I mean, hey, this is great to be here and the engagement with the constituents, but, you know, your last comment there, as far as being here, I mean, it's one concept I often have, and that's, I get more done out talking with residents and not being, you know, in a meeting and being right here. I get more done listening and hearing from the constituents and being out in the community. So, I mean, as far as what I view as high priority and valuing of your time. So, and then, yeah, I like Tuesdays as well. I think that's great. So I know that staff's kind of already, at least, we'll have that further discussion and to think about in December and to think about when we really go into the reorganization meeting in January, to really firmly set that schedule. But I know you guys are kind of talking right now ahead of time, this is kind of goes hand in hand, so I'll just weigh in on that. Yeah, I really like Tuesday. I like 6:00 PM from the aspect of, my concern always in the past was it's the staff. The staff's the ones that are being asked to stay late. They're here already, you know? It can be 5:00, 6:00, 7:00 AM, and then they're just starting a meeting at 7:00 PM. And I always felt like that is so late, and to get them back to their families. And, you know, I mean, six o'clock is a time between work and you get time to get dinner and come over to a meeting or be here. I mean, it's, to me, it's that earlier start is just, it's more beneficial there. But I hear what you're saying, it's more specifically seven was more of a working session. My only concern with that is, is the, you know, one meeting six, one meeting seven, that, does it become any confusion at all for residents? So that's, I think that's something we can work through on that. And, yeah, those are, I think those are the primary comments there. What I did hear also, Mr. Dills, what you addressed, as far as the window of speaking. And I still have, I think I view, some concern with the discretionary of when that's applied, because there's people that try to exploit the rules in the system to just bring unnecessary lawsuits against organizations. And so if you at discretion say, hey, here's a few extra seconds, and someone else doesn't get a few extra seconds, how are you gonna defend that in court? So I think what you bring up is a good point, when you reference the West Claremont School Board. And apparently, and obviously, I'm gonna listen to our legal guidance on all this, but the West Claremont School Board, if they are at a three-minute stopping point on their talking, I mean, I see their egg timer. I'm assuming that's their egg timer that's been up here. This has been here for all year, and we've never used it, obviously. But if it's a three-minute, then I would think that the rules would need to be written to the effect of, you have some maximum or a cap if you wanted to do a discretionary. So the rules would say five minutes, but we're targeting three minutes, and there's a discretionary, it's all on the podium. It's all on the speaker, their choice if they want to go more than three minutes. Sir, ma'am, you're being asked three minutes, that's our rules, that's our, you know, it's on the note card when they sign in, three minutes. They may use all five minutes, if they want to use all five minutes, but that's where it's probably be the black and white, that that's the rules as we adopted, and it should be fair and equal to everybody, unless there's an outstanding condition as far as some type of disability that needs adaptive assistance.
Can I address that point particularly?
Yes, please.
I forgot to address that when you mentioned it previously. There is law in the township, and I can add it to this, that indicates in situations where you need adaptive concerns or disability assistance, that you can let the board know ahead of time that we will make adaptation for those needs. So that is... So that is built into the system already, that if we have a concern of someone that has to leave those type of accommodations, that we would work to accommodate.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. I think we'll continue to get more feedback. Mr. Becker, do you have any more?
Yeah, so I did want to just reiterate, for the work session, there's not going to be a lot of staff here to be in committee. If I get your, your point on that and I, and I agree with it, but again, it's going to be kind of skeleton staff, it's not going to be like our normal session, work session is going to be very different and I think it'll be a lot more brief. So I think it'd be an opportunity bumped it up to seven o'clock is just my argument for that. I hadn't thought about what you said, one meeting's at seven, other meetings at six, are confusing. That's a good point, I hadn't thought about that. And because, you know, we all know it's always six o'clock, meetings are always six o'clock unless it's a special meeting, we could call it at any time. You know, I, I still want to try it and see how that works out. Regardless, we, we can discuss more of that later. The last point I wanted to make was something I, I guess I've never forgotten and some people in this room might not have forgotten this either. So this is going back in time a little bit, it was a Miller Police discussion and there was, you know, hundreds of people in the room and the board said, I think it was three minutes per person, which was not unreasonable, you got 300 people in the room. And that place downstairs, by the way, the place was packed. And, you know, so of course, you know, so most of these hundreds of people in the room pretty much had the same complaints and the same things to say. You know, therefore everybody's just repeating what everybody else is saying, three minutes is certainly not unreasonable in that circum, in that situation. What comes to mind, it was the, the director of the Sensai Nature Center wanted to speak. He had, I don't know, a couple of pages, I, I'm not sure how many minutes he wanted to go, but he was cut off at three minutes. And I thought, you know, that was certainly consistent, but I thought that was unreasonable. I thought because of his, I thought I want to say stature, but his unique position of being the director of Sensai Nature Center, very unique from all the other residents that were in the room, I, I thought he should have had, I thought he should have been allowed additional time for that reason. So I, I just, that's what I want to avoid in the future with, with being, you know, kind of, you know, set in, set in stone because I think there are circumstances, we're going to want people to have additional time.
Those are, those are great points. And I think, and Susan, do we outline with this rule package as far as if there's any written documentation? Yeah, it can be submitted to the fiscal officer. So if it's something that's more lengthy, so I think that's, that's where that, I, you know, one way, we can communicate out what the, you know, what the rules are, but I think the ask there would be essentially a, I mean, think of any significant presentations you've given where it's, hey, here's my, here's my highlights, bam, 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 right? Here's my elevator pitch, here's 500 pages that I want to submit to the fiscal officer also to further, you know, facilitate. And, and I get, I get the striking the balance with that. I mean, to me, that's also why any vote we ever take, you know, I'm, I'm always, if there's, if there's people that have opposition or, or interests that's different than the vote, I'm always full open to, I mean, last year there was a development, it was on the Glen Esti site with Provision Living and I made the comment that the people that were opponents to it, I said they're welcome to, at the time is a referendum, you know, and put it on the ballot basically for the community to decide. I want people to be aware of their rights. So sometimes there's the administrative recourse and there's the referendum recourse depending on if it's an administrative act or legislative act. And actually to your point, what you bring up with the Miller Place Development, that's one where nearly 4,000 petition signatures came in within about a month's time after the passing of that resolution to make the minor modification, well, we won't go into the details on that, but 4,000 petition signatures came in and it ended up in lawsuit because it did not go over to the board of elections, it did not go to the ballot for the people to decide. And the township's direct defense was the people did not have the right to referendum their government and speak to their government. And I just, I don't, I think that's abhorrent and we should never be down that path. So I really respect the position that you're sharing there of that vein. I always look at what are lessons learned and how can we can take those as lessons learned and move forward. And I think that's exactly what we're trying to do here by having some type of meeting rules and agenda. And we don't want to be in a situation ever where, one, where 4,000 residents says we really missed the mark with stakeholder engagement and some type of survey or response. But even if there was 4,000 residents that came in with the, you know, a petition that we, that we, we know that their voices are heard and have no issue with, you know, seeing that their rights are taken care of and, and move forward. So thanks for sharing that. Anything further?
No, sir.
All right, so at this time...
I have a question. Ms. Ayers, when do you want to call for a vote for this?
December.
December.
So I will have it out on our website tomorrow and I'd like to bring it back in front of you with December for a final vote.
Great, that's exactly where I was going with that, is there's no action on, on that discussion topic for item foxtrot, so we move forward with item golf because foxtrot, if it, as everyone, be clear to hear that, it will be posted on the website and she'll be able to receive comment and then we'll be able to have it up for essentially a vote in December, that if it's moved forward and approved at that status, then it can be enacted the following month, which would essentially be at our reorganization meeting in January, which is the appropriate time really to set up meeting rules for, for the remainder of the 2023 year. So, moving forward, item golf, approval of resolutions. Ms. Ayers, would you like to introduce resolution 2022-42?
Yes, sir. This is asking for authorization for fiscal office to issue a non-allow certificate for payment of some expenditures, $13,150.86 to Fuel Man for fuel purchases and $4,868.64 to DocuSign. This is the board authorizing that we had money available and appropriated to the fiscal office to make the payments at the date and time they were incurred.
Gentlemen, any questions for Ms. Ayers?
No, sir.
All right, so we're being asked to approve resolution 2022-42. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, now I am excited about this one and it may seem, it may seem small to some people, but I'm excited, I'm excited about this one. Mr. Becker, it should excite you, I think you've, you've used a few names for yourself in the past, I'll let you call yourself, not me, but Ms. Ayers, would you please introduce resolution 2022-43?
Yes, sir, thank you. We are asking to approve contracts to enter into a road resurfacing agreement with Claremont County. The idea is that in the past few years, the cost of road resurfacing has escalated significantly. A lot of that has to do with the cost of asphalt. The county runs a cooperative program with all the smaller jurisdictions, being able to opt in or opt out of the county program, in which the township or any local government can submit a list to the county of a budget and the roads they would like to see resurface and the county will effectively aggregate all of those requests and do one set of collective bidding. The idea is that we'd have more economies of scale and be able to utilize a better pricing. I would note, as an indicator, if we had used this program in 2022, we would be able to save approximately $63,000 in payment by entering into the county program. So I, I do think it is significant and when you have a budget of, let's say perhaps $800,000 for next year, which is what we're slating, $63,000 can be a significant amount of money. This is an area where I'd like to save as much money as possible and potentially be able to plow that back into additional lane mileage as opposed to spending it on costs.
Yeah, I was excited to see that one. I mean, get the economies of scale there and be able to have an easy savings of 63,000. So let me, so that's never been done previously in the township or at least in recent history. And what's the pro con on that? The pro con is that we don't just have direct start control?
It's my understanding and from what I've heard, is that we might have used this in the past, we have not used it recently. There was some concern previously about being able to control the timing for when roads got paved, so making sure that we got our roads paved when we wanted to get them done. I understand that concern, but I would also point out that in Ohio, you can, and Mr. Taylor, please feel free to help me if you like, but you pretty much pay from March to November, it's when the weather allows. And so to me, it would be more important to save the 63,000, potentially do extra road miles, knowing that we're going to get paved sometime between March and November anyway, that's when paving season is in Ohio. I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add from experience standpoint?
The county, the county is going to put the bid out earlier this year than they have in the past. They're actually looking to put it out in January, whereas in previous years, they put it out a little bit later, which to Ms. Ayers's comments, the roads we did, did get paved a little bit later, but putting it out in January will be advantageous for us.
Great.
Yes, I'm excited as well. This is a good program.
Good, good. Great to hear that, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Becker, you have any, any, say, $63,000?
I'll take it. I'm for it.
Ms. Ayers, did you spearhead this?
Mr. Taylor brought it to my attention.
Mr. Taylor, well done. Well done.
Great work, Mr. Taylor.
Well done. Good job, sir.
Yeah, I just think of, you know, you think about that over 10 years, it's $630,000. I mean, where can that money be, you know, for more, more mile, we got 131, what is it, 132?
133.
133 now, yeah. 133 now, 133 miles of road. So, and again, if you, if you, if you actually plot that out and that's what, we'll get more in, out of our strategic plans in the future where that's plotted out as to when does all 133 miles of that get repaved? But, you know, even, even increasing costs and doing four miles, you know, we did 4.3 miles last year, you can see 133 miles, I mean, four miles in a year is, you know, tough. So, so anyway, all right. Well, hey, thank you. And do we have a motion on resolution 2022-43 for approval?
So moved.
Second.
No further, hearing no further discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, I'll open up for comments from the board members.
Just two quick things. So very proud of our park and recreation committee. We meet right over here in this room and, and these folks are just citizens that decided to step up and volunteer, take their own time, and then they're also very passionate about soliciting feedback from their neighbors about what they want to see for the futures of their, of their parks. And so great meeting this past month and we're making a lot of headway and I just, it's, it's good to just kind of sit back and watch these folks discuss, debate and make, you know, future changes that they want to do. So appreciate them taking time to volunteer for that. Last thing I want to say is Thanksgiving is next Thursday and so happy Thanksgiving everyone. And, and our police and our fire EMS and our dispatchers that work while we are at home eating turkey and watching football, grateful for them very much. And so appreciate them working the streets and taking emergency calls very much. So wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. That's all I got, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Becker?
Really not a whole lot in terms of final thoughts, pretty much everything on my mind I've already blurted out earlier. But that's something I, I appreciate about tonight in particular is I like these lively board discussions. I, I think the, the audience appreciates it too and it's something we didn't see much of in, in years gone by. I'm not sure we've seen any of it actually in years gone by. But yeah, I, I really like these open, open dialogue and, 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 you know, I, I don't feel bad when, when two of you don't agree with me, it's okay. You know, I'm not always right, I get it, you can just ask my wife, she'll tell you. Hey, beyond that, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving as well.
Thank you, trustee Dills, trustee Becker. Yeah, echo both, both your sentiments, it's, you know, it's great. But you, you do bring up, you highlight one point that I, I should have reserved earlier when we're item foxtrot there, but the public comment period. Yeah, you know, I mean, tonight you can look at the progress through, we go a little lighter on the business meeting, this is typical, so things go through cycles. You get into spring and you get summer, there's a lot more activity, permit activity, public hearings, there's just, it's, it's very cyclical and you guys will see this now as we cycle into the next year. It's something I've, I've learned through my time here, but just looking at tonight, you know, so we're in for an hour and 40 minutes so far. And, you know, again, I, I enjoy, obviously it's why we moved in January was that, we moved public comment, it was one of the very first actions we moved. Public comment used to always be at the agenda, the last item on the agenda. Like right now is where public comment would be. And when you sat in those seats, you always felt like, well, I wanted to talk about something, but now they've already done voted on it and I don't want to have anything to say. So one of the very first things we did was we moved public comment up to the very beginning of the agenda. And it's lively and it's great. I, I love hearing different perspectives and, and feedback. There's, yeah, there's, there's elements of multiple times where we've had, you know, some speakers that maybe go for 25 minutes and that in a sense, you know, you have two or three other people that speak for three to five minutes on average, I'd say that's where people typically are, three to five minutes, you know, but then you're, you're at 45 minutes of just a public comment period. So I recognize where the county commissioners put a, you know, a 30-minute time window on their agenda just to, kind of like I said, is this the appropriate forum then? If it's going to be longer than that, should it be, you know, should we have some other type of stakeholder engagement that we, we do some, some surveys and some, some stakeholder analysis and working sessions and involvement there? So I just, I just have that as a kind of closing comment to both of you as far as the, the discussion on public comment earlier. It's just striking the right balance and, you know, the benefit is, is we can all agree and disagree and not be disagreeable and we'll find a way forward that's, that's great for the community. So that's, that's what we're all about here is positive traction, moving forward for the community. So with that, we did just come through Veterans Day and, you know, I said it going into last month, but, you know, again, I hope everyone had a great Veterans Day. And, you know, as we move forward here, we have, our non-emergency functions will be closed in November 24th and 25th and observance of Thanksgiving holiday. Last Thanksgiving I brought over, you know, some of my, my Thanksgiving, I made a Thanksgiving platter and brought it over to Fire Station 53 and, you know, and here I am thinking, you know, bringing them, well, they had stuff in too from like Kroger is, I believe is one of the, you know, so there's really good, and maybe Chief can share with me on that too, that I don't miss someone that does annually, but the firefighters described to me that, you know, we have some great community partners that typically will help feed our first responders on the holidays like that. And I just thought that was really great, but I wanted to put that out there now because anyone that's in the community, if you're looking for a way that you want to, you know, again, I'm still going to bring something over to the fire or the police, you know, get a kick out of doing that, but you guys can reach out to our staff, you can reach out to our board if anyone's interested or you can go knock on the door and say, you know, here's some cookies or here's some, you know, plate of food. So I see Chief Gavigly and Chief Donnelly both shaking their heads, yes. Is there any community partners that you would recognize that have done excellent with that in the past?
It varies every year, but the community, the residents usually step up and provide stuff and you can never go wrong by bringing food to a fire. But, you know, every, you know, I will say every year the residents step up and usually somebody in each of the districts, all six districts will stop by, whether it's a plate of food or a plate of cookies or a pie or dessert or, or one of the businesses. But again, you know, you're never going to go wrong bringing food to a firehouse.
Good, thank you. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, so I just wanted to kind of let people know, you're welcome to knock on the door and say hi, you know, I, I brought something by for you. They're, they are your fire and your police, so. All right, so speaking of police versus fire department, basketball game is going to be December 10th at the Civic Center Gymnasium. Do we have a time on that? Is it six? It's in the evening, I know that we'll have 5:30 maybe?
Yes, sir, we encourage everyone to come at 5:30, there's some prizes, there's some other things ahead of time. Tipoff will usually happen about 6:00, 6:15, once we go through some of the prelim. If you've never been, it's a, it's a great time, it's a great for the whole community to come together. If you have time that night, please consider coming out.
Is there a favorite at all? Who's favorite in the game?
Police might be 2-0, sir, but I'm not, I'm not...
Oh, interesting. Chief, Donnelly, you want to comment on that at all?
We're going to reserve comment till after the game.
Is there, is there any like, you know, is there any like wager between you two at all?
I was just about to go there.
You know how like the governor of Ohio, governor of Michigan always does that for,
You know how like the governor of Ohio, governor of Michigan always does that for, yeah, so, the, uh,
We might come up with something.
We, we better come up with something.
I did notice one of the last police officers was a very tall gentleman, so I think they've been recruiting.
If you're above six feet, we want you.
How much is the ticket?
No, they're free.
Free, free, it's free, yeah. Yeah, so, um, yeah, you, I knew you went right down that path as far as the friendly wager, um, I'm sitting here thinking of, uh, you know, what, what's eventually going to happen with, uh, Pete Rose, and now that, and there's so much, such an initiative that, that's allowing, uh, sports betting, et cetera, so, um, yeah. So, our next board trustees meeting is going to be December thirteenth, uh, twenty-twenty-two, and then, uh, the next Parks and Recreation Committee will meet on December fourteenth of twenty-twenty-two. And, uh, is it six P M. for the trustees meeting, and Parks and Rec is also, is it six or? Six P M., six P M. as well, so both me and her six P M., so, that's kind of let, leveraging up that way for six P M. starts. Uh, so gentlemen, at this time too, we'll seek a, uh, motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section one-two-one point two-two golf as follows, section, uh, item one, to consider the employment or compensation of a public employee.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
We're into executive session at seven forty-six P M.
All right, gentlemen, at this time, I got eight fifty-five. We'll entertain a motion to exit executive session with no action taken.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
We're out of executive session at eight fifty-five with no action taken.
Gentlemen, at this time, we'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
We're adjourned at eight fifty-six P.M.
Thanks, gentlemen.
You lose your train of thought.